It's a call meeting number forty-one for the Mahoney County Commissioners to order Thursday, October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, ten oh two A.M. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for being here and look at that. I mean, Bob, it was very nice of you to bring your daughter to your last meeting.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So, and your granddaughter?
Don't start that.
Be good and welcome. So, what do you think? Are we gonna go out of order and, you know, just like roast Bob for a while and forget about the meeting?
I don't know.
Yeah, go to the meeting.
All right, we'll go through the business portion and then we'll get to Bob. Okay, approval of previous minutes of board meeting number forty on Thursday, October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, and approval of those pertaining to other motions.
So move?
Second.
We'll call.
Commissioner Remedio Ordetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tropicanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
General entries.
Motion approved, general entry number one.
Second.
We'll call.
Commissioner Remedio Ordetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tropicanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Agreements. Commissioners, on item B.
Commissioners, this is approval of the fourth year renewal lease agreement with Alta behavioral health care for leasing of space at Oak Hill Renaissance Building effective August first, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, thank you. EMA.
This is their maintenance agreement for the Siren tornado activation system.
Gotcha. Jobs and family. Audrey, you can take that.
I was gonna let Mr. Bush do it the last time, but I'll take it.
You know what? He's he's in a box.
This is an agreement with Jobs and Family Service with our children's service to extend our ten shift care deficit program until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, in the amount of five hundred eighty-one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. And that's a non-genderal fund.
Excellent.
Item D, item D, Jobs and Family Service Amendment Number Two with the Intercity Transit LLC for non-emergent transportation net services due to the change in rates per unit pricing.
Okay, thanks, Audrey. Sanitary.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. He is in agreement with Greenwood Clay to provide spray and protector for the two floors of recently acquired vehicles and also put on rust inhibitor. And that is an agreement with LJB. This engineering club will be providing an update and upgrading of the deal with wastewater treatment plant. The work will include preliminary engineering, engineering and preparation of plants in respect for the possible upgrade and improvements to the wastewater treatment plant at Dealway.
Thanks, Bill. Sheriff's Department.
Morning. This is an agreement with Watts Water Solutions. It's a company that supplies us with the battery backup for the jail in case our power should go out. It's a one-year agreement, service claim in about five thousand nine hundred ninety dollars, non-genderal.
Joe, I thought they had like one of those self-propelled bike or those bicycles you pedal that the power would not, you had to sit on it and ride it, get that generator company. That's not, they don't use that anymore?
No, we don't use that anymore. We're high-tech now.
All right, Joe, thank you. Motion to approve agreements.
Motion approved agreement, whatever thing throughout.
How about G?
And G.
Second.
That's a good start off.
No, we're good. Roll call, Joe.
Commissioner Remedio Ordetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tropicanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Road closing. Patrick.
Good morning, everybody. We need to close Middletown Road between Fair Grove and Unity Road between November fourth to the twentieth for a road replacement. Listen.
Thanks, Pat. We saw you on the news last night with all those little Geiger counters above your head that you you used to use in the olden days. Now you just shoot that laser beam out there and does it all for you.
That's right.
Yeah, pretty much. That was a, that was quite a nice thing that George Montgomery's granddaughter did for us.
Why don't you give a little, in case someone didn't see it?
So, we had an instrument, like if you can see the street above my head, that's my collection of antique survey instruments. We had a lady drop off a piece of equipment that was her grandfather's by the name of George Montgomery. George Montgomery served in this office from eighteen ninety-eight to nineteen eleven, then again from nineteen eighteen to nineteen thirty-six. During most of his career here, this office was titled county surveyor, and in nineteen thirty-five, the title changed to county engineer. So, and that's this George Montgomery, but they were affiliated with the county prior to that. Him and as well as several others were known as county surveyors. So, we have a piece of equipment that he used that is well over a hundred years old and still in pretty good condition. So, I'm in the process of getting a case made so it can be put on display, and I want a plaque with Nancy, his granddaughter's name on it, showing that she donated that to this office. You know, and it just perpetuates our profession and shows the advancements, you know, from what they they used a hundred years ago versus what we use today.
Yeah, that was pretty nice, the story they did last night on the news. So, thanks, Pat, for sharing that. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Did we approve the road closing?
No.
Okay, motion to approve road closing.
Motion approved road closings three eight.
Second.
We'll call.
Commissioner Remedio Ordetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tropicanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
We'll call.
Commissioner Remedio Ordetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tropicanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Resolutions. Commissioners, on item B.
Commissioners, this is resolution in demand, resolution two thousand and seven oh twenty-two for approval of addendums and expenditures to reallocate fifty-five thousand to Veteran Service Commission to fund a Thanksgiving turkey draft, and that's just being allocated from other funds that we've had in other places. Item B is a resolution accepting the retirement. Commissioners, do you want to do these two? If we're gonna read them, maybe you do them after.
I'll do it. Just a resolution accepting the retirement of Robert E. Bush, Jr. Junior.
Yes, sir. There's another one of me.
Director of Jobs and Family Services effective October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. We'll definitely get to you as soon as we adjourn the business portion. Commissioners, on the resolution approving the appointment of Audrey Morales as the interim director of Jobs and Family Services, Child Support Enforcement Agency effective October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. And we'll get to you after after we get the call. I know you will. Thank you. Dog warden. Diane, I see you in front of the center.
This is a resolution approving the appointment of a part-time dog warden and a recently vacated physician.
Diane, do you have a pooch in your office? Do you have an office pooch in there?
Yes, and she was barking by to put her house down. I put her out in the office for a minute.
Oh, okay, I was hoping you'd have her in there and show us. Because maybe we can, I thought that we were gonna take and give that to Bob and Glenn for their retirement present. Aren't you like outside the door with that dog so that we can bring him in for Bob?
That's what everybody wants, more work when they retire.
Sanitary. Phil.
Yes, commissioners, this is a request by the department to approve an authorization agreement. This is to permit a private company to enter the county wastewater treatment system. The sanitary sewer lines to perform work on behalf of Dominion East Ohio Gas to ensure the lateral connection for the sanitary sewer are not in conflict with their proposed rehab, repairs and replacements. This will also provide for the company to have access, to work with us to ensure that the, we have a presence here when they do enter our system to protect our sewer system, and also requires the company to post a bond with the department to ensure that in the event there would be any damages, that we would be able to use this bond on behalf of the people or possibly the county to repair any sort of damage to the baby's body.
Excellent, thank you. Motion to approve resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions, A through E.
Second.
We'll call. Oh, I'm sorry. That's true, ma'am. Commissar Remedio Ordetti? Commissioner Tropicanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
This has been one of those days.
Okay, I'm gonna read this press release from Aqua before we end the meeting, right?
Um, yeah, they're gonna read it, but we need to have the draft.
So, we're not gonna talk about this in the meeting, or?
Yeah, why not? Call Bill to the, Bill's here too, so.
Okay. Bring Bill up.
Bring Bill up.
Okay, Bill.
Hey, Bill, we were gonna talk about the Aqua press release.
Yes, this is a press release to announce the initiation of the project on McCartney Road in Coatesville Township. It's a project that we've had a joint venture with Aqua Ohio, Mahoney County. Board of Mahoney County Commissioners were successful in obtaining an ARC grant in the amount of around one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Aqua Ohio will be paying the balance of this project cost, and again, the intent of the project is to extend water line out towards the Purple Cat facility. This is the facility that assists developmental facilities for people and also provides services to the community. It's a very worthwhile project. Commissioners have been behind this project to get the water out there. Previously, the commissioners have been active in giving sanitary sewer also out to dislocation. So, this is to announce that the contract has been awarded to Marichin Gaffney, and the project is ready to begin.
Good. Okay, excellent, Bill. Thank you so much, and we'll just let, we'll just release this, and they can have the nuts and bolts on.
Yes, it will be released, Commissioner, through Aqua Ohio.
Gotcha.
Could I say something about that project?
Sure.
You know what? That that project not only helps the Purple Cat, but if you look at the adjacent Pennsylvania to that, that brings more economic development from that corridor right straight through to Pennsylvania when that when that sewer and water lines are completed.
You know, him and Pennsylvania, that's why I like them.
And Dave is gonna be on that train with them with the green, what color is it? Golden. So, I'm excited about that. Shows the partnership between two communities, which would be Coatesville, Mahoney County and Pennsylvania. You know what?
That's why I didn't do that.
Well, I'm excited about that. Aren't you?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it does open that whole board for us.
Yeah, I'm really excited that that's, and you know what I learned is, at one point, the talk was that they were gonna put a casino over there.
Right.
Or a casino. Is there a law?
Well, and and the whole, the whole initiative is around the Purple Cat and helping with the camp gathering, and the, it just shows again another public-private partnership that between Aqua, the county commissioners, and the Purple Cat.
Right.
So, it shows that, you know, that that we continue to work together and bring everyone to the table to make sure that, you know, we're trying to expand, and if you look at the corridors we're talking about, like Bill Coleman has reminded us so often, that this twenty million dollar project between New Middletown and Boardman with the sanitary system, once that's completed, it's gonna open up a corridor between Springfield, Poland, Beaver Township that'll expand and provide opportunities to have new development. Pat Kennedy is working on the widening of the roads in the Western Reserve Road area. All of it goes hand in hand to show that that, that when you have an interstate in Beaver Township, you have six eighty, you have the exchange there, you have access. This area is gonna open up like it does in Lordstown, in Austintown, and in North Jackson. You know, when you have the infrastructure and you have the accessibility, you know, this will provide one of the best corridors, not only between Pittsburgh and Cleveland, but between New York and Chicago. So, so you're right, it'll open up a lot of things, but we're gonna put a gate valve at the Ohio PA line so we make sure that we don't get anything coming from Pennsylvania into Ohio.
If you look at downtown, if you look at downtown Youngstown, right now, everything's under construction. When that gets done, this this is just all gonna work together, all of the new development that the county of David Anthony and myself and Bill Coleman and everybody that was involved in this is doing, but not only that, but the city, which is the hub of Mahoney County, will be a part of that because they are opening up all the roads, the YSU corridor, so everything's just gonna come, in the next five years, you're gonna see a whole new Mahoney County. Everything is a part of the plan that we put together many years ago, and some of it's coming to fruition as as we speak, and within five years, we'll have everything that we spoke about many years ago, the three of us, that that we're doing. So, I'm gonna thank David Anthony and myself for that.
Thank you.
And, of course, the prosecutor's office, which we couldn't do anything without legal help.
Ditto.
So, thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, so we're talking about the new, and now we'll get to the old.
Don't look at me like that.
Right, Bob? Okay, so, at the end of this, let's have a motion to approve the resolutions. But didn't we do that?
No, we didn't.
Okay. All right, Joe.
We did, actually, but.
What, you did?
We, I said A through E.
Yeah.
But if you wanna do it again, but we already did.
I'll remember.
Okay.
Commissioner Remedio Ordetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tropicanty?
Yes.
Yes. I have a check mark too, but if we start talking, you know, we just lose focus. All right, well, thank you on the Aqua.
Nancy's on here, she's gonna talk about.
I'm sorry?
Nancy's on here, she's gonna talk about.
Who is Nancy? Nancy, where are you?
She won't be, I know.
Nancy!
I mute your mic, Nancy.
Do you know how to do that?
She'll show me. She's right here, she's just not so injured.
All right, well, well, let's, let's, we'll adjourn the meeting and then we'll just get to the, okay. Motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
We'll call.
Commissioner Remedio Ordetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tropicanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
All right.
Can I talk about the other situation for a minute? I talked to you about, but the school war.
Oh, that's right, for next week. Yeah, go, yeah, please, Bob.
Thank you. On the agenda for next week, commissioners, we'll have an agreement with the YMCA for about four hundred thousand dollars with JFS, and that money is primarily, you've heard of our program, our PRC money and our TANF money, and some of it is COVID, COVID money. And we're gonna have an agreement where the Y is gonna provide some services to the, primarily the children from the Youngstown City School System. We had a meeting with Mr. Jennings, the CEO of the schools, and he's in agreement, he's aware of it, and he's gonna provide a lot of service. The only criteria is two hundred percent of poverty and a child in the home. Obviously, if you're talking about the school district, that includes most of the school district. So, you will be having that on your agenda for next week, and I believe that if you call, Tom should be on the line right now to give you more detail.
Yeah, Tom and John.
Yeah, they're on the line now to give you more detail.
Tom, Tom Casey is on the line?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, there's Tom. How are you, sir?
Great to see you, Commissioner.
You too. Tom, Sean, please.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to address, this great opportunity too, and we appreciate partnering with the Ohio, the department, Mahoney County Department of Jobs and Family Services. The program is the youth development program, and it's something that Sean Armstrong has been working with Justin Jennings about. We're proud of what we're doing right now. Since the Mahoney County City Schools is all virtual, we've set up a scholastic support program at the central line where Youngstown City School Kids can come in and do the virtual learning at the line, and there's lots of other opportunities that Sean's been talking about, but, you know, we're excited to provide, provide these things to the youth of Youngstown and to the, to the youth that really need it. So, I'm gonna introduce Sean Armstrong to talk a little bit more about it. For those of you who don't know, Sean has replaced Mike Schaefer, the longtime central director, so he had pretty big shoes to fill, but I'm so proud of Sean coming back to his roots because he was, he was born and raised on the east side of Youngstown, graduated from Cheney after going to East for a little bit, and then he had a successful career, which unfortunately is too, too common where people go away. He was in Raleigh, Rhode Carolina, in the medical field, doing successful, and then the opportunity for Mike Schaefer's position came up, and Sean wanted to give back to the community. So, I'll let him tell a little bit about himself and then talk about what he perceives this program doing for the youth of Mahoney County. Thank you for letting me address you, Sean.
Thanks, Tom. Sean, Sean, Mike?
Can I hear you?
Sean, is your computer might, um...
Are you muted?
He's talking. Sean.
Oh, okay.
His computer might be muted.
I'm not working.
Is your computer muted?
Okay, all right. Well, that's Sean, I guess you can't.
Sean, check your computer to make sure it's not muted.
It's not. It's not muted.
No, but you can actually have your computer computer muted.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, not the mic, just.
Sean, can you call in with your phone?
Sean, call, can you hear me, Sean? Call three three oh, five oh three, nine one nine oh.
Hello?
There he is.
Can I hear him? Can you hear you?
Well, we don't. I heard. They heard something, but no.
Are you calling in or are you calling me?
But that was good, what were you doing?
I've got Sean on my phone now, so wait, wait, wait till Phil, wait, they can hear you. Can you hear Sean? Speak up, Sean. Can I hear you? Can you hear him?
It's more segregated.
Yes.
Can they hear me?
Yeah, Sean, yes.
Okay, I'm running, sorry about that. I called in and for some reason it's still hit off, but pleasure to meet you guys. Tom gave us, I think, a really thorough introduction of myself, just pleasure to be back in the city and serve and get back, so. Yeah, this program that we're doing, we connected with Justin Jennings before the school year started. Our goal is to really meet the needs of the community, so we started there to see what metrics he was working on, what the kids had deficiencies, and saw opportunities to help bridge those gaps. Of course, with COVID, and again, being a kid from the city, understanding the challenges that these kids are faced, being out of school since March, you know, we wanted to step up and be a part of that and help these kids in any way that we can, so these funds are gonna really help us go further, reach more kids, and, you know, really support our community the best way we know how, so truly appreciate you guys for that. We have a lot of other connections in the area that we're making, providing and connecting resources for these kids to bridge those gaps, and I stated this, this opportunity will allow us to accomplish those goals, so thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you, Sean, we appreciate that. Tom, anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, just one more thing is that the YCA is honored to be one of the last official acts of esteemed Robert Bush and his son. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate that. And the amazing job you do too, Tom. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Oh, I'm embarrassed.
Okay, sure.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. I'd also like to thank Lori Murphy for helping us get this together. She was very instrumental in meeting with Mr. Bush, myself, and Mr. Jennings, and my boss over at YMCA, Tom and Sean, because I also work for them, but we'd like to thank Lori and Tom Babanac assisted us too with making sure the funding was properly.
Lori, Lori, yeah, Lori's on. Is Lori on? Yeah, Lori's on. Lori, Lori, unmute your mic. I mute your mic. Okay, okay.
Light on now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, it's, Mr. Bush and I started talking about this as well as soon as the decision was made by CEO Justin Jennings, and we got connected with Sean, and we've had numerous conversations. We really just expanded the program and started with the day program, and then Sean said we have an after-school program. We added physical activity to it, so we just, the more we talked, and then we met with Mr. Jennings, and then Tom came on the line, we just kept expanding this, the more Mr. Bush and I were talking and the more we were talking with both Tom and Sean. So, I just wanna thank them for their cooperation. I think this is a great collaboration. I'm looking forward to working with the Y. Sean has been great so far. If I may add also, I am also in contact with Eric Barrett from OSU Extension. We are planning to do a similar program with them as well, so he is getting his information and his proposal together for me, so it's really a great collaboration between the Y and OSU for the students of, you know, low-income Youngstown City Schools facing the challenges of virtual learning. So, I wanted Mr. Bush to speak about this as well too because he was very instrumental in this, so I thank him for his guidance, helping me get this off the ground.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You know what? Lori, Audrey, Bob, of course, and the team that put this together, because it took a teamwork, and the Y. You know what? I love the idea of the partnership with the OSU Extension. Love that idea. We have thirty-seven acres of property at the YDC area on Old Town Road, and which would be a great thing in the spring is to have our young people not only learn from a book, but to actually bring them out, because I know the Y has a bus, in my current faculty, they have a bus, bring the kids out to the property, work with Jeff McGotta from Flying High and Joe Shiroki with Alta, and learn actually how to interact and plant in the meaning of fresh produce, of fresh market.
Sean, call, can you hear me, Sean? Call 330-503-9190.
Hello?
There he is.
Can I hear him?
Can you hear you? Well, we don't. I heard. They say so. They heard something, but no.
Are you calling in or are you calling me?
That was good. What were you...
I've got Sean on my phone now. So wait, wait, wait till they can hear you. Can you hear Sean? Speak up, Sean. Can I hear you better? Can you hear him?
It's more segregated.
Yes.
Can they hear me?
Yeah, Sean, yes.
Okay. All right, so not bad. I called in and for some reason it's still hit off. But pleasure to meet you guys. Tom gave us a really thorough introduction of myself. Just pleasure to be back in the city and serve and get back. So, yeah, this program that we're doing, we connected with Justin Jennings before the school year started. Our goal is to really meet the needs of the community. So we started there to see what metrics he was working on, what the kids had deficiencies, and saw opportunities to help bridge those gaps. Of course, with COVID, and again, being a kid from the city, understanding the challenges that these kids are faced, being out of school since March, you know, we wanted to step up and be a part of that and help these kids in any way that we can. So these funds are going to really help us go further, reach more kids, and, you know, really support our community the best way we know how. So truly appreciate you guys for that. We have a lot of other connections in the area that we're making, providing and connecting resources for these kids to bridge those gaps. And I stated this opportunity will allow us to accomplish those goals. So, thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you, Sean. We appreciate that. Tom, anything else you'd like to add?
Just one more thing is that the Y C is honored to be one of the last official acts of the esteemed Robert Bush and his Sean.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate that. And the amazing job you do, too, Tom. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Oh, I'm embarrassed.
Okay, sure.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I'd also like to thank Lori Murphy for helping us get this together. She was very instrumental in meeting with Mr. Bush, myself, and Mr. Jennings, and my boss over at YMC A, Tom and Sean, because I also work for them. But we'd like to thank Lori and Tom Babanak assisted us, too, with making sure the funding was properly...
Lori, sorry.
Okay.
Is Lori North?
Yeah, Lori.
Let her say it.
Lori, Lori, unmute your mic. Unmute your mic. Okay, okay.
Hold on now?
Yeah. Do you want to say...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, it's ner. Mr. Bush and I started talking about this as well as soon as the decision was made by CEO Justin Jennings. And we got connected with Sean, and we've had numerous conversations. We really just expanded the program. It started with the day program. And then Sean said we have an after-school program. We added physical activity to it. So we just, the more we talked, and then we met with Mr. Jennings, and then Tom came on the line, we just kept expanding this. The more Mr. Bush and I were talking and the more we were talking with both Tom and Sean. So I just want to thank them for their cooperation. I think this is a great collaboration. I'm looking forward to working with the Y. Sean has been great so far. If I may add also, I am also in contact with Eric Barrett from OSU Extension. We are planning to do a similar program with them as well. So he is getting his information and his proposal together for me. So it's really a great collaboration between the Y and OSU for the students of, you know, low-income Youngstown City Schools facing the challenges of virtual learning. So I wanted Mr. Bush to speak about this as well, too, because he was very instrumental in it. So I thank him for his guidance, helping me get this off the ground.
Excellent. Thank you so much. You know what, Lori, Audrey, Bob, of course, and the team that put this together, because it took a teamwork. And the Y. You know what, I love the idea of the partnership with the OSU Extension. Love that idea. We have 37 acres of property at the YDC area on Old Town Road. And which would be a great thing in the spring is to have our young people not only learn from a book, but to actually bring them out, because I know the Y has a bus, my current faculty, they have a bus. Bring the kids out to the property, work with Jeff McGotta from Flying High and Joe Shiroki with Alta, and learn actually how to interact and plant in the meaning of fresh produce, a fresh market with the kids. I think not only for the city students, but for the Mahoney County students, this is what's needed. They need to have a purpose. The purpose is to feed people. Thank you. I appreciate that.
That's a great idea, Commissioner Gaddy, and we already have been talking with Flying High and seeing how we should collaborate with them. But, yeah, we're so excited about the campus of care and providing programming, whatever the Y can do out there with the rest of the nonprofits. So I hadn't thought about that. That's a great idea. We definitely will explore that and get that going.
And I will definitely keep reminding you about that.
Thank you, Commissioner, for stating that, too, because Sean and I did add a piece of transportation into the contract, not knowing where that could lead to, but knowing that was an allowable expense. So we already got that built in, so I think that would be great.
Excellent. And I won't let you forget it.
It's on County Line Road.
County Line Road. I'm sorry. It's... Why do I keep saying Old Town Road?
You can get to it.
Okay. I'm sorry. County Line Road. Well, I know how to get there. I can drive the bus.
It's easy to pass, though.
It is.
You lose track where you're at, then.
Okay, that's a great option, too. Thank you. All right, well, any, are we going to, do we want to put up any of the staff?
Yeah, if everyone can open, if everyone can turn your video cameras on for Bob's administrative staff and anyone who would like to participate and say something to Bob. So if you turn your cameras on now and take your mutes off. We're going to unmute everybody on our side, but we ask you to mute unless you're speaking. I see I have Liz on here. I have Michelle Hozzo. Tom Babanak. Dion is on here. Ms. Phillips. Bernadette. They might all...
Okay. You know what, why don't we, why don't we start off and let Audrey start? Because she's in person. We'll go to Paul, and then we'll go up online. Audrey, anything you'd like to, you want us to stand here? If you'd like to bump them on the head?
No.
You want to borrow this stuff?
Not at all.
Did you bring your own hammer? Maybe a ball beam?
No. But what we're trying to do is convince him not to finish cleaning up his office, that he could come in on Monday. He says no. But from, for me, and I know on behalf of all of our staff, we are truly, truly going to miss Mr. Bush. He has been an excellent director, a great leader, a compassionate person to all of his staff. And he's there for you. You could go into the office, speak with him, share anything with him, and he will listen. He's a listener and not just a director to tell you no, 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 or yes, yes, yes. He will listen to everything. So we are truly going to miss Mr. Bush. And I don't know what else to say. I've been trying to talk him into staying. I told him I was his boss as of now and that he has to go back to the office and work and not clean off his desk. He can come back next week and do his desk job.
Come on, Bob. You've had about 200 bosses for a long time, haven't you?
But thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Mr. Bush.
Thanks, Audrey.
And we've known each other a long time. And Ms. Bush, thank you for lending him to us. Because I remember, I just want to say this real quick, when we tried to get Bob to come to the director's office and be the director, he said no, 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 absolutely not. He continued to say no. We talked to Gwen, called her, no, not going over there. So I don't know what changed or what happened, but we ended up with Mr. Bush. Going to miss him.
Well, I'd like to say about Robert, I've known him since I became a police officer in 1973. So what is that, nearly 50 years? But Robert is the epitome of the word "service." From his days as a door gunner and crew chief of a helicopter in Vietnam, where he was wounded twice, received two Purple Hearts, a Bronze Star, I believe. What else, Robert?
Just a bunch of stuff.
A whole bunch of stuff. That's exactly right. And I never knew if you were drafted or if you enlisted. So were you drafted or did you enlist?
I enlisted.
Okay, but back then, they were actually drafting in the Marine Corps. Then to his days on the Youngstown Police Department, where he started working undercover, making undercover drug buys for the Narcotics Unit. Was promoted, I believe, in '76 to detective, which was a special service rank in and of itself. In '78, he left, went to the Postal Service. During the time he was on the police department, he also attended OSU, graduated. And he started the, for the United States Postal Service, he actually started their undercover operation with several other fellows who were, I'm not quite sure what you'd call them, because they were all, they were all unique individuals. I met several of them. And they were, they were something else, good law enforcement officers. Robert decided to go to law school. I encouraged him to go to law school. I don't know if he was very happy about that at the time, but he attended law school and he graduated. And probably within a year or two of graduating, I believe, you served on the Youngstown School Board. Was that why you were in law school?
No, I was working for you then.
No, no, you weren't working for me. You were private law practice. It was after law school. Yeah, on the school board. And so again, service. He then became an assistant city prosecutor. And he shared office space with me, Attorney Jimmy Gentile, Tim Maloney, if you remember him, became probate court judge. And Mark Huberman, who was a magistrate here for many years, became an assistant city prosecutor. And came to work for me, which he didn't want to do it. But I played the friend card, number 20. Said, "I need you, Robert. I'm all shot up here and I can't do this without you." So he reluctantly became an assistant Mahoney County prosecutor and just provided invaluable assistance to me. Like many of my other employees, George McKelvey stole him and made him law director for the city of Youngstown, another position of service. And a very difficult position, being law director of the city of Youngstown. Then he decided he would become the police chief. He wanted to have some fun. And I'm sure he did. And he ran that police department very, very well. Robert came back to the prosecutor's office after George McKelvey left, and he was chief of the criminal division of my office. And the person who approached me about Mr. Bush, and unfortunately, I probably should have called him, was George Tablack. George Tablack called me and asked me if Robert would be interested in taking over Job and Family Services. And I didn't want him to go, but I also realized that Robert Bush was custom-made for that position just by his very nature. The fact that he's extremely knowledgeable on the law. The fact is, Ms. Morales said, he's a listener. And he doesn't only listen, but he hears you when he listens. And the fact that he had the labor experience necessary for that position, dealing with all of those unions over there. And he has done an excellent job in maintaining good relations with the unions and good relations with the personnel. I never expected this day to come. But I'm very sorry to see you go. Of course, I'm happy to see Audrey taking over the helm of your shift. But we're going to miss you, Robert, so please, don't be a stranger. And I will miss Gwen more, because she's a lot easier to... Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
So is anyone that's on the screen would like to speak from his department? Okay.
Karen's on there, too. She might want to speak. Karen?
Anyone up there, please? You know, we're waiting for somebody to chime in.
You gotta...
That's it.
I'll go stand. Lori Murphy?
Okay, Lori.
I'll go stand. Mr. Bush, I told him this, I don't know for how many, when it comes to Bosses Day and we get him his cake and his donuts, we give him this card. Awesome. I might get a little choked up. I always write this to him, "Bosses are feared and leaders are followed." And I think that just sums up the kind of person that he has been to all of us for the last, you know, almost eight, nine years at Job and Family Services. So he's been a very good leader and, you know, he left his mark on the agency. So thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thanks, Lori.
Anyone else on?
Dion?
Dion?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, we can hear you. We can't see you.
We can hear you.
Yeah, that's purposeful.
I see.
Okay, I love talking in front of people, but since I'm doing it from my couch, it makes it a little more comfortable for me. So I just wanted to say, I've spent most of my legal career working with Bob in some capacity for probably over 20, probably close to 25 years. I started in the law department and in the prosecutor's office as a new, very green attorney and had literally no idea what I was doing in municipal court, probably had no business being there. And Bob always looked out for me and made sure that I learned what I needed to learn about law, about the criminal justice system. Also, I think how to treat people and to see people beyond what they look like or what their current circumstances happen to be. And ask, you know, what can I do in my professional capacity to make things better? And I've always tried to remember that and follow that philosophy through my career. I'm going to miss Bob, of course, his humor, his empathy, and his quiet insightfulness, and just his friendship. Bob, your friendship has been one of the most meaningful friendships of my life. And I will never forget all that you have done for me professionally and even more importantly, personally. And I love you, my friend.
Be careful, his wife's sitting there. Okay, anyone else online? Next.
Hello, this is Tony. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Tony, go ahead.
Tony Tablack.
Hi, Mr. Bush.
Hey, Tony.
I'm more sorry to anybody to see you go. I just want to thank you on behalf of the CFDA. I know you inherited a tough life. But like everybody said, you're a great listener. We appreciate you. I've learned more from you in the 10 years that you've been there than any boss I had in the 34 years. And I just want to congratulate you because you're the only one in my 34 years that walked out on your own.
How do you know Lori? Tony.
I'm sorry, Tony.
All right, who else?
Jimmy?
Jimmy?
Karen, is Karen up there? Does she want to speak?
I don't know.
Lynette?
I don't see her, but I...
Yeah.
Of course you're alive.
Karen, are you online?
No, I don't.
Good luck, Bob.
Who was that? Fordby?
Yeah.
Oh.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Go ahead.
Good luck, Bob.
Thank you.
You don't have your phone?
Okay. Lynette?
Lynette? Yeah, I'm going up there. I could say, you know, I've worked as a prosecutor, I've been a lawyer down from this, frighteningly, 30 years ago, to be real quick. But when Bob, when I first met Bob, it was obviously when I was working with Paul. He came to work as an assistant prosecutor. And like Dion said, you know, once you know Bob, he just, he does such a, he's such a huge, has such a huge impact on your life. Because he's so, he's quiet about how he gets things done. I learned how to, how to listen, which is the most important thing, that he teaches how to listen. And that you don't have to bull people over and be so aggressive all the time, because that's not how you get things done. You know, those of you who know me know that I, I believe that we as humans are producers, and Bob is the epitome of that. He understands that the desired output of everybody in that agency is to, not just to survive, but to flourish. And he's done that. He has changed that agency. When the suggestion was made that he become head of JFS, I was like, as much as we hated for him to go because he was such a great impact on our office, I knew what he could do there. He just, and he did exactly that. He turned that whole agency around, and he has phenomenal people that work with him. And I think that you all probably felt what we felt when he was working with us, is that he lifts you up. And that's what he does. And I'm so sad that he's leaving, you know, the county, because he's been such an amazing person to work with. But I know he hasn't done yet, because he's writing a book, and we can't wait to read it, Robert. We're going to have a lot of time now, so we'll be looking for that. So with that, I want to say, Bob, I'm so sorry for you to go. Please come by. I'll keep candy in my office all the time. Don't we miss you and love you.
All right. Thank you, Lynette.
As a Vietnam veteran, I want to salute you. Send us over how your discipline carried over to show that Vietnam veterans and other veterans can be successful and professional. You've stepped the bar, showing that veterans are people that get involved and do good jobs such as you.
Thank you.
And you're still going to be saying the...
He's still on the 11.
If anyone's online and wants to speak, please.
Say what we got, please.
This is Liz Phillips. I'd like to say something quickly. Bob, I just want to thank you. Everyone has said exactly what I'm thinking. I do want to thank you for being such a wonderful leader, a mentor, but most of all, a friend. Good luck and enjoy your retirement. You deserve it.
Thank you.
Is anyone else online?
I'd say real quick, Bob, we'll miss you around the homies here at Oak Hill. This is Lou Vega. And often, when you think you're at the end of something, you're actually at the beginning of something else, to quote the immortal Fred Rogers. So good luck to you on your new journey, and we'll be seeing you around.
Thanks, Lou.
Thanks, Lou. Anyone else online? This is so weird. Well, Anthony, I think you were here when Bob was hired at JFS, right?
Absolutely, yes. Paul Gaines is exactly right. You want me to say something?
Great, yeah, sure, why don't you tell us?
You know, through, through my life and career, beginning with Jim Trafficant and working downtown, there was always one name that was always synonymous and always came up, Bob Bush. Who's this Bob Bush? Bob Bush. So in knowing Bob as a county commissioner and hearing all the testimonials, I am not surprised, reading his pedigree. Bob's background and resume reads like a Hollywood story. Nobody could write a script like that. There's just no way. And knowing you, Bob, George Tablack did come to us and recommended you to lead Jobs and Family Services. And for me personally, it was the most easiest vote that I had. Your credentials are impeccable. You've worked your butt off your entire life. You've given it and laid it on the line for this community your whole career, and you never left. And I find that to be astounding, because a man of your background and education and military experience could have went anywhere in the country. But you stayed here, you stayed loyal to our community, and we were lucky to have somebody of your background in a position like that, because it doesn't happen. in a position like that, because it doesn't happen, it's never happened in my career. And I'm sure it won't happen much for anybody else's. And on a personal note, Bob was always attentive, he always returned phone calls, and Bob always had empathy in something that I have, for the plight of other people who were struggling or were hurting. So, as Paul said, and many of us in this room, not so much his, his background, his education, which we know he had, but he had heart. And when I see a person that has a heart, who wants to serve in that position, Bob knew what he was up against, he knew the demographics, the geographics of this county, he knew the unemployment rate, and he knew the job that he had to do to help those people who could not help themselves. So I wanna thank you, Bob, take me out of the picture, for your service, not only to your country, but to your community, and your beautiful wife Gwen, who's involved in a lot of things in the community. We owe you a debt of gratitude, and I'm gonna miss you, but you know our doors are open to you, if you get bored, come on back. God bless you for your service, and it's been an honor knowing you, my friend.
Thank you, thank you.
Carol is city councilwoman, along with Bob was there, I'm sure that you gotta keep it G-rated here.
I can remember, God, Bob and I go back many years, when he, when I was on council and he was the chief. And he was there when I was Law Director too, and then he became Chief. And which was the greatest thing, as everybody has said here today, that he's a guy that you could call up, talk to, complain to, yell at, and he'd say, "Well, okay, now what are we gonna do about this?" And then, he was the calming factor, and sometimes you need that, while city government, you do need that. Where you were at in JFS, which was a great department for you to be at, because you had the temperament and the love of the, the poor people and the people that needed you the most, and you were there to help. But in city council, we had, well, we had a good time with that, huh, Bob?
Yeah.
I mean, he was the chief, I'd always say, "Well, what are we gonna do for the fourth Ward War?" Are we gonna send two cruisers over for the fourth war, or are you gonna share me on half of that? And he used to say to me, "You're the only one that calls me every day for this, every day." Do you get tired of it? But I said, "No, actually, I'm upstairs." And I come to see you, and I'll come up there. But I mean, he was the kind of guy that was just always there for you. And even as the Law Director for the City of Youngstown, and I also wanted to tell you, I ran into John McNally yesterday outside, he was running in the park, actually. And I ran into him and he's, I told him that you were retiring, and he said, "Wish him the very best for me." He says, "That was a great guy," since I've worked many years with him. So he gives you and Gwen congratulations as well. But Bob, you are, you, you, I've got to say, of all of our directors, and we have a lot of them, and they're all of Tena, but every time I call you, and it's been many times, whether it was over there in the City Hall or over here, you always answer them, Bob. You're always there to help. And, and I, I just, I congratulate you on your retirement. If you get bored, you can always come in and sit in my office.
She's got booze in her office.
Oh, God, no, you, you need booze. We're gonna have a great, it's gonna be a great run for you in retirement, but like I said, down the road, if there's something that you think you could add to the county government, we're here to listen. You know, you've been around, you know what's going on, I mean, we're welcome to have any advice we could have, whether it be from your JFS side or anything else, we're always here.
Thanks, Carol.
And I always have your number, so don't change it.
Thank you, I enjoy it.
God bless you.
Well, Gwen, what'd you got?
You know, Carol got here, you know, we have a lot of diamonds. On behalf of your retirement, Bob, let's wish us on your retirement, October thirtieth, twenty twenty. And, you know, we congratulate you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
God bless you, Bob, and this too.
Thank you.
This is, we put this together, that was the write-up, it was so wonderfully done, with your career, and God bless you, you know.
Thank you, Carol.
That's just what you did in the military.
Thank you. Carol. Thank you, thanks, everyone.
Everybody, turn your phones.
Hey, Ed. Thanks for your time. Thank you. It was good articles. Would you like one in, give us one? Come on. I appreciate it, buddy. It was helpful. Pardon Tuesday. Okay, St. Lucie's, is that? No, St. Luke's, not St. Luke's. Oh, St. Luke's. St. Luke's, right on, south of that. There's Democrats. Election night, you mean? Okay. Okay, cool, I'll, I'll, I'll know. I'm actually not working on election night, but I'll, I'll pass that information off to the people. Who are they gonna send, Bullock or? I don't know, we have like eight or ninety people working the election that night, and I'm not a killer. Uh, let's see if you know, you probably don't know these just.
Pass, pass him up a pot.
You know, he supervised, okay? I feel, I feel real.
You know, he supervised, okay? My mom, and then he said, "When it got to me, it was the worst."
Oh, yeah? Save the best for last, right?
Uh, that's too funny, I'll just.
So you're a full-time reporter.
What do you have over there? We got sandwiches, Bob, you got even something?
You have a bobhopper?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have a lot of bob.
You got the bobs?
Bob, what do you, we're still taping, so let's still tape. Hey, Bob, why don't you, why don't you talk a little bit instead of us?
In the meantime, there's sandwiches and cookies back here, please.
Well, let's, let's have a little.
Mr. Bush is gonna speak.
I just, I just wanna say thank you to, to. I just wanna say thank you to everyone individually and, and collectively. I've had a, I've had a great, great life, and.
Only 'cause of Gwen.
I've been blessed, there's nothing I haven't wanted to do that I haven't done. And, but you don't do it by yourself, you don't, you don't do it in a vacuum. All of you folks in this room are, I consider you friends and personal friends of mine. The folks in, at JFS in my administration are personal friends, and folks throughout the commute. And, yeah, the phone never stopped ringing, but no one in this room ever told me no, except maybe Gaines. No one, and that's, and that's how you pass it on. I could do you a favor, but I gotta talk to somebody else, and they've never told me no, that means so, so much, much to me. And I really, I just wanna say thank you, I really appreciate it. I'll just think back just a little bit, I, I do love, I didn't know I did, but I do love Youngstown and Mahoney County, that's all I know. And wherever I travel, I'm very proud of where I've come from, and I always, I did come back here, Anthony. And I'm not sorry, I'm not sorry at all. And, and the way, one thing Paul didn't remember, the way I got here, and I'll, I'll tell the whole story now that it doesn't, it's, it's, it's okay. Paul called me like on a Monday, said, "Bobby," well, he called me in his office, he says, "Hey, I was just talking about you." Now, I'm, I work for him, I'm Chief of Criminal. I said, "Yeah?" He said, "Well, I think you need to go up at JFS." I said, "Paul, I work for you, I don't wanna go up there." He said, "Well, they're talking to you, about you up there, maybe you should go up there." And I'm thinking, "He ain't trying to get rid of me."
No.
I said, "Well, how did that happen?" He said, "Well, George Tablack thinks you should go up there." I said, "I don't know," he said, "Well, throw your hat in the ring, let's see what happens." That was like on a Monday. Now, now that we're talking, you know, the big, the big political fight at that time was the Gaines camp and the McNally camp. So that was on a Monday. Two days later, I get a phone call, hello, "Bushy, what's up?" "It's John McNally." I said, "What's going on?" He said, "Nothing," he said, "What are you doing for breakfast tomorrow?" "Meet me at the Golden Dawn," by Ed Block. So I meet him at the Golden Dawn, we're talking, he says, "Hey, you ever think about going up to JFS?" I started laughing to myself, I said, "No, what's up?" He said, "Your name is floating around," I said, "Why don't you throw your hat in the ring and let's see what happens?" And I, and I, and I, thought of, I guess, the two biggest factions in the county opposed to each other. And I know they didn't discuss it, but I guess they thought I was good enough and true enough to the mission, that they could trust me to go, Paul and, and John. And I, I ended up going up there, and I will say this, and then I'll get away from it. Paul never called me and asked me to do anything, and John never called me and asked me to do anything. They just let me be the, be the director. Commissioners, I owe you my personal thanks. It's often said about JFS in the state of Ohio that the most difficult directorship in the state of Ohio in the system is the director at Mahoney County. Because, because of some of the, the politics, not your politics, but the politics of the area. They say that's a, this is such a job in, in the state. But, but again, I had a lot of help. And lastly, I wanna thank my wife and my family, because they take the, they take the abuse. I'm, I'm having a ball, and they take the abuse, and I appreciate their support always for whatever, what I've done and, and my successes, and my failures, they've been there all the time. And I made it to my retirement, I hope to get some time to enjoy it. And I got like six courts of Jack Daniels. My wife referred to me as the alcoholic Deacon. She said, "Why do people keep giving you that?" I said, "I don't know, I don't know." But anyway, thank you for everything, just thank you for the opportunity, and I, I've enjoyed it. I didn't even look at it as a job, it was just, it was my life. And every now and then, I used to tell my wife, she would complain, "Robert, you need to get out of that, get out of that." Not about JFS, just get out of this public service, and I would tell her, "Gwen, that's all I know." You know, I thought about it, but it's, that's all I know. And I think it's been more pluses than minuses, but again, thanks for everything, thanks, everybody, thanks for everything.